Thank you. So how about I ask if you would like to come down, councillor?
It's just a quick question. Somebody asked what is the commercial that's being slated to go in? That's it. It's very minor and maybe for the public record. Have you got anything for commercials?
We need to have him come down, though. Would you mind coming down, sir, just for a quick moment? Good morning. Just to the podium here, Ida, the microphone's not on.
Joey will catch that.
Good morning, sir. So the ward councillor has a question.
Good morning, everybody, and thank you, councillor Johnston, for the question. The commercial part is tentatively decided as a pharmacy and a convenient type of store typically people use for going to a medical facilities, that kind of a small convenience store. And additionally, if there are space available, could be a coffee shop or something like that.
Thank you very much for that, and thank you for investing into Mount Hope. I know we just put in the downtown renewal program into Mount Hope, so you're the first one out of the gate, and welcome. Thank you very much. So I'll move it at the appropriate time.
Thank you, sir. And to staff, we're all clear, so I'm going to ask then councillor Johnson is going to move the report with the amendment, moved by councillor Johnson, second by councillor Conley. All in favor? Carrie, thank you, everyone. Item 6.2 is...
Without comments? Or with comments?
I'm sorry, with comments.
Without submissions or with submissions?
Yeah. Got it, Ida? Okay. Thank you. Okay. And now item 6.2 is, sorry, applications to amend Glanbrook zoning bylaw number 464 and for approval of a draft plan of subdivision known as 9890 and 990620 Road West, again, Glanbrook. I have to read this off again. Members of the public, in accordance with the provisions of the Planning Act, please be advised that if a person or public body does not make oral submissions at a public meeting or make written submissions to the council of the city of Hamilton, before council makes a decision regarding the draft plan of subdivision, the person or public body is not entitled to appeal the decision of the council of the city of Hamilton to the Ontario municipal board, and the person or public body may not be added as a party to the hearing of an appeal for the Ontario municipal board unless, in the opinion of the board, there are reasonable grounds to do so. So I'm going to call out to the public, again, this is with regards to, sorry, here we go, 9890 and 990620 Road West. Is there anyone here in the audience wishing to speak to this item today? I have to read this off three times. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this item today? Again, I'll close off to the floor. Councillor Johnson?
Yep. First of all, I'd like to move to close the public meeting, and then I would like to move to waive the staff presentation, but I do have some questions, because it's also regarding another development that Melanie and I are working on, and it refers to drainage. So this is all part of the drainage plan, so I just want to ask those questions, please.
Thank you. So it's moved by councillor Johnson, second by councillor Partridge, to waive the staff presentation and to close off the floor. All in favor? Carrie, councillor Johnson, your question to staff?
Yep, thank you. And Melanie, thank you for the report. It's very well done. As you know, we have a development just right next door to this, and the villages of Lancaster are the ones that receive all the drainage from these developments. And there was a big concern about the other development as it goes through the water courses. They spent $75,000 trying to clean out their swim ponds, their drainage courses, so now they're more concerned that they're going to be receiving more water coming through, and it's going to have an impact on their financial requirements. So through you, Chair, to Tony Sergi or whoever is the engineer for this area, my understanding is the St. Elizabeth's Villa is the ones that receive all the water at the end of the day, but it's a water channel that goes through several pieces of property. These properties are almost like the headwaters for this. And some of the concerns that the residents had were the silt, the construction debris, and all the things that they have done in the last five years, cleaning out their swim ponds, cleaning out their water channels. So what is the obligation on the developments, this one and the one that's coming? What are the obligations on those developments to ensure that that water, first of all, does not increase, second, the silt, and third, the debris that comes from construction work?
Good morning. Through you, Madam Chair. As part of this draft line application, the applicant actually submitted a stormwater management report. They have to meet the predevelopment flows within the site. So there is no increase in flow is actually going through the channel.
No increase, okay.
There is no increase in flowing, going through the channel. So the developer actually has to meet the predeveloped flows they have to contain within the site. Secondly, actually, there is also actually flows goes into the 20 Road ditches that actually will be captured.
Okay, thank you for that. I really appreciate it. And I think we just need to keep a flag on this area, because we do have a lot of residents that live in that area that end up becoming the recipients of whatever happens to the development coming forward. And through you to Melanie, there's a mention of the retaining wall in here. So can you comment on that, please? Because that was something else that they had concerns about.
So through you to the chair, the proposed retaining wall is located on 990620 Road. It's the eastern portion of the property. The residents east of that did have concerns about the retaining wall, so we've noted in our staff report that there are requirements as far as location and the design of that retaining wall, and that gets reviewed through the draft plan of subdivision as a condition.
Okay, oh, sorry. Go ahead. So through you to Melanie. Melanie, this retaining wall, one of the concerns was that it be solely on the property of this development, not on their property, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So ownership and maintenance is now on that property owner, not the ones that rode in from the villages of Lancaster?
Correct. It was a property fronting directly onto 20 Road. It wasn't from villages of Lancaster. And again, the retaining wall will be on 990620 Road.
Thank you. And can you just please, through you, Chair, to Melanie, can you just please reiterate the tree planting? Because there is a lot of, it's a bit of a woodlot back there. Woodlot would probably be stretching it a little bit. But can you please just reiterate what the tree planting is the plan is, please?
So through you to the chair, the tree protection plan, again, it was submitted at the beginning of this application. It identified all trees that are on site and trees adjacent to the subject lands. The tree protection plan must be satisfied and finalized before they can start development. There are some large trees that are along the border of these two properties. So the idea is that those trees are evaluated. If they're on the, if they're determined to be on 9906's property, then they could be removed. But if they are not on the subject lands, they would have to be protected.
Okay, thank you very much for that. And there's also another letter in here from someone who objects to the fact that the property was sold, father had dementia. Can you please comment on that?
So through you to the chair, again, this letter was in regards to how the property was sold. Unfortunately, we can't really do anything through the planning process. We do have copies of the legal documents associated with that sale to ensure that it was a legal purchase, but unfortunately, it's not dealt with through the planning process. It would be more of a civil matter.
It's a civil matter. Thank you. I just wanted to get that on the record as well. So at the appropriate time, Chair, I would like to approve, or move to approve the 6.2.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other questions from committee, I welcome back to you councillor Brenda Johnson. Moved by councillor Brenda Johnson that the staff report with the amendment be approved, and that will be that then there were no submissions received regarding this matter. Thank you. That's what's in here. So red light revised, is that correct? Am I correct, Ida?
Just to mention the written submissions, how they affected the decision.
Okay, but there's...
Yeah.
Okay, but it says a staff report with an amendment. Oh, and how it was, how the comments were, that there were no submissions. Fine, that's great. Thank you. Moved by councillor Brenda Johnson, second by councillor Partridge. All in favor? Carrie, thank you, everyone. Now we're going to move on to discussion items 8.1. We dealt with last meeting. It is back before us. This is the application for official plan and zoning bylaw amendment for nine located 125 Wilson Street East and part of 130 Daly Drive, Ancaster, Ward 12. Item 8.1 was lifted from the table at the last meeting, or was tabled last meeting, so I first have to have a motion to lift it from the table. Moved by councillor Aiden Johnson, second by councillor Donna Skelly. All in favor? Then we have added correspondence this morning received from Nancy Friday of Wellings Planning Consultants and Sarah Hickey of Fogler-Rubenoff. May I have a motion to receive the added correspondence items? Actually, there was one other, and then the, oh, a delegation request, my apologies. May I have a motion to receive the added correspondence items 8.1 and 8.12, moved by councillor Skelly, second by councillor Aiden Johnson. All in favor? Thank you. And good morning councillor Ferguson. Today. And we then also have, let me see, we have a delegation request, and that is from Gordon Spears of 106 Mansfield Drive, Ancaster. And may I have a motion that we will follow the procedural bylaw with a five-minute limit for him to come down and speak? Moved by councillor Green, second by councillor Aiden Johnson. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. So I'm first going to ask, and I'm sorry, then we're going to move on. Okay, I'll ask Gordon Spears then to come down, please, sir. Good morning.
Thank you, Ida. Good morning, Madam Chairman, and committee members and councillors. As Ida has handed you out something I'm going to leave behind for you, I'll explain what they are. You've identified where I come from. I've lived in Mansfield on that property for 24 years. Mansfield Park is noteworthy as a subdivision in Ancaster. It's one of the longest-standing ones. It's quite unique in its character. Extensive setbacks, street orientation, all that sort of thing, and original homes that date back into the 50s. It's a highly sought and very desirable place to live. I'm here because the residents of Mansfield are very concerned about how this proposed development will impact the uniqueness of the neighborhood. And I'm representing a large contingent of the actual residents of the area. I've handed you a note that I emailed out to my neighbors last evening. I was not able to attend last meeting due to out-of-country commitments, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to address the group. I sent the, I finally was able to send out my notice to the large group that I've been involved with through a severance application within the neighborhood. And although it didn't go out till 7:30 last night, within three hours I had 40 responses, which I'd requested as sort of an electronic email, electronic petition to provide me with support to speak on their behalf. The emails have kept coming in this morning, and I'm probably at about 55 as of this moment. So what I'd like to do is, you've got two handouts. One is, one that's in letter form is what I sent to my fellow neighbors to solicit their response. And there's a point form one that's numbered, and that's the highlights of the contents of the letter, and provides an easier way to follow what I'm going to present to you. It looks long. I'm not going to spend that kind of time on it. You can read it faster than I can say it. But I would like to, I would like to address the highlights. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to go into the details of the issues that were likely raised at the last public input session by my fellow neighbors, things like traffic and street elevation details, front and side yard setbacks. I'll just say that from my perspective in general, 10 variances in an official zoning amendment application seems to be, on principle, simply too many. There needs to be a point to having a zoning bylaw, and I'm not quite sure that this addresses it. However, most of those issues are driven by the requested density, that being some 50% greater than permitted, and resulting in a literally doubling of the permitted lot coverage, which when coupled with the full permitted height buildout yields a massive monolithic unit. Now, the designers have been quite creative in attempting to break up the front elevation, and that may be acceptable to many. But my and our concern is primarily with the rear of the property and its view from the north, namely Mansfield Park. And those are the key points I want to address. The developer purchased 130 Daly Drive to facilitate that max buildout right to the high-voltage corridor and easement, and that will effectively bring the rear of that building to within about 22 meters of Daly Drive. And the building will rise as much as 15 meters, 15 meters above Daly Drive. That's because the rail-trail bed that exists as a slight rise adjacent to Daly is probably 3 meters to 4 meters in height on its own. And that serves as the base for the building in terms of elevations. So you're going to have one big looming monolithic wall with that existing tree buffer. And that tree buffer, while it is there, will not adequately hide in the short term, let alone the long term, as the trees continue to fail. And certainly with the winter view, it's even more sobering. And that the vigils will present a very significant negative impact on the neighbors to the north, literally the whole subdivision and not just those on Daly. I will say, however, to start, that we are in full agreement and support with, support the staff's recommendation to zone the bulk of Daly Drive 130 as conservation slash hazard land zone, reflecting what I and others specifically asked for in our independent submissions back in August. And it's only by doing this that we feel that that buffer will be maintained in perpetuity. However, the buffer has its own issues. It consists of a large number of very tall, spindly, top-heavy, small-top coniferous trees, a few significant deciduous trees, along with some relatively low scrub deciduous undergrowth and minor trees. Those tall trees are dying, as evidenced by deadfall, maintenance spoils that are laid there to rest, and there are a number of standing dead ones as well. Our concern is that if the building is of the scale, the wind patterns that are going to change as they swirl around that are going to negatively impact those trees as well. And we recognize that as part of the sale agreement clause identified, the transferee will not cut any trees unless required for safety reasons, which appears fine. However, I'm concerned about who defines the safety issue. It's one thing to have the city as an owner maintain the trees on that strip of land and deal with scenarios where they'd knock out power to the local residents. When that occurs under private ownership, what is to stop the developer from declaring all those similar trees a safety risk hazard and take them all down? Given how the developer chose to initiate the clearcutting of 125 lot on a Sunday afternoon or Sunday morning last summer with no warning to the neighbors or anybody else, I'm a little less comfortable regarding intentions and motives and actions in this regard than I'd like to be. Further, the renderings from the architects of the rear elevation show a nice yard look, complete with mature trees, makes you think you're in the back of a nice subdivision location. Those trees are going to be planted within the hydro corridor. They were proposed to be large species. Staff has said they have to be smaller because of, for obvious reasons, sitting under the hydro lines. And that said, we've got many examples where hydro maintenance on a five-to-10-year cycle simply clearcuts its easements to ensure safety and operation associated with high-voltage line maintenance. And I have little expectation that they're going to treat this any differently at some point down the road. So what we are proposing that you consider very, very strongly is a requirement for the buffer as it stands. We'd like to see the developer be required to plant and ensure establishment and maintenance of a variety of interspersed conical evergreen trees. This is point 16. A minimum of 7 to 10 feet in height, the length of the parcel of land known as Part II of Plan 62R 2151 Daly, which is along the top of the historical berm, in other words, between Daly and the hydro corridor. And to do that, the complete length. This would provide a visual barrier between Daly and any new development proposed for 125 required to protect our neighborhood privacy, and particularly in the event the existing trees are removed by maintenance staff, the owner, or natural elements over time. I assume this could be done through site approval, site plan approval, but we feel very strongly it must be done as a condition of approval for any development of the parcels identified. It's the only way that an appropriate screening of the north elevation of the building will be maintained and enhanced over time. I anticipate the owner will object because of cost, but given that they paid just over $20,000 for 130 Daly, I really don't have much sympathy for that, given the state of the real estate market, and he can certainly afford to do it and do it right. It is not done now as a condition of approval, along with appropriate long-term caveats ensuring that they actually will maintain it. This is not some Carolinian forest that is some prized jewel you don't want to walk into. This is, this is a buffer zone that we need to see maintained. And if we don't do it this way, it won't get done. Finally, Daly, I don't see in the plan any fencing identified along the north side of the parking lot. I've not gone through any elevations, because we don't really have any. But I've got a great concern for their neighbors on Daly Drive, that cars, trucks driving into that parking lot, their lights are going to shine right through that buffer at certain points in time and right into the second-story windows of the homes that are on Daly. It'll be very intrusive, and again, it needs to be addressed. Again, probably likely through site plan approval. So in closing, we're very concerned the proposed development as currently presented will have very significant and negative impact on the very unique and very desirable Mansfield Park, our neighborhood. Having to view what is proposed without the necessary and effective buffering is truly an assault on the unique character that Mansfield Park represents. And if you've gone and looked what it will look like as you drive up Mansfield to go to Wilson Street, and picture an 150-foot-long building, three stories high, sitting on top of it, 12-foot berm already, it's going to look like an orphaned apartment block. So to that end, under point 21, we're requesting that the proposed density and lot coverage of the development be reduced. I think all of the issues are stemming from that. It's a density issue that's been, that frankly, in my view, run amok. Might be a nice building to some, but it's a significant push on every single front. It's like putting a square peg in a round hole. We'd like the developer to be required to truly enhance the buffer by existing
I know.
historical bed planting. We'd like the...
Mr. Spears, you are over the five minutes. I know you're very close to the end, so I'm having committee members question me. I'm allowing you to continue.
Okay. We'd just like the city to address, if they can, what defines safety issues and what the actions can be and when. Because when those trees come down, it'll change everything. Beyond that, I think I've covered everything. It's a unique, it's a unique neighborhood. We're very concerned what it looks like. The focus is always on the front of a building. In this case, the back of the building is just as important to 100 people that live there.
Okay.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spears. Was there any questions at the presenter? Seeing none, may I have a motion to receive the delegation. Moved by councillor Partridge, second by councillor Green. All in favor? Thank you, Mr. Spears. And now may I have a motion to, let me see, R. Okay. So we're going to ask Nancy Friday to come down with regards to ongoing discussions, and I know you made presentation at the last meeting. And just for the record, David Premi is not in attendance, but he was here at the last meeting as well.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of committee. I will be brief. I think two weeks ago, we were around, we were here, speaking about the proposed development and talked about the proposed official plan amendment, the community node, the Ancaster-Wilson Street secondary plan, how it is designated for additional growth. And we talked about the zoning bylaw amendment to RM6. There were a number of very good questions regarding the design of the building, how it was, from David Premi, how it was designed, based on the irregular shape of the lot, and keeping in mind the historical character of the village core. There was a, there was an indication that the number of variances were a concern. Therefore, the letter that I prepared and you have before you today is more in-depth analysis of those modifications to the RM6 zone. So in our opinion, there are basically, there are a few modifications in the zoning bylaw, the draft zoning bylaw amendment, that are actually more restrictive. And one of those is to set the minimum lot area at the .44 hectares, when only .4, .4 is the minimum. So when you whittle it down, there's 10 modifications to the actual RM6 regulations. And some of those have to do with eliminating a play area, or allowing tandem parking, or reducing the planting strip a little bit along the front or the side yard. So in essence, we are talking about an increase in lot coverage, increase in density, and in some respects, the landscaping percentage. I think we talked, I talked about it last time, that the open space that was purchased by the owner is not being used in the calculation, and that if it was being used, these three modifications for density, lot coverage, and landscaping would not exist. Also... Well, as you may recall, I don't have a good slide that shows it. There is a sort of a long piece that goes behind additional properties to the west. Even if you remove that open space area and just consider the open space area to the rear of this building, the modifications to the regulations still would not be required. So those, the density is at 91 units per hectare based on this, just the area to be, to be rezoned, RM6, doesn't include any of the open space. There have been variances, modifications approved to lot coverage in the secondary plan area at 44%. Yes, we are higher at 50. But I think you can look at the constraints the site has in terms of its triangular nature, and see that, yes, it's a bit higher, and we're eliminating the open space that was required. So in my opinion, the 50% is, lot coverage is a reasonable lot coverage. The density, again, part of the letter I prepared, I was, I was looking at different RM6 zone exceptions in Ancaster and found densities at 131 units per hectare, 161 units per hectare, some lower. The official plan would allow for 75. The zoning allows for 70. So yes, we're at 91, but we're not at the max, we're not at maximum in terms of other proposals within the Ancaster-Wilson Street secondary plan area. I think one other thing I checked up on, based on the last conversation, was 95% of this land now drains to the north, drains to Daly Drive. With this development, 95% will drain to the sewer. It will be stored underground, underground storage tank, and released into the sewer. A small percentage of it will still drain to the north and into the Daly Road ditch. But the functional servicing report also notes that 1.5 Mill Park area drain into this Daly Drive ditch as well. So that's outside of the premise of this application. And if there is any flooding issues, it may be due to external influences as opposed to this property. So the drainage will be improving based on this development. The height, the previous commercial building was 10.5 meters. This is 11 meters. The townhouses to the west will be 11 meters. So I think that's, generally speaking, 11 meters is acceptable. This, this building, yes, the frontage is broken up along the frontage, along Wilson, and it stepped at the back to recognize the triangular shape of the lot. There's seven on-grade parking spaces, seven visitor parking spaces. I don't believe that's an extraordinary amount of cars coming in, shining light on the residence along Daly Drive. Underground parking is provided for the residents. So I hope the letter, I know it was fairly lengthy, but it went through each of the variances. And I was hoping that it would help explain that individually and together... variances, and I was hoping that it would help explain that individually and together, sure, they're a bit higher in one area or lower in another, but there's 10 variances, and there's modifications at 15, 12, 11 have been approved in the former town of Ancaster. And actually, the RM6 zone itself, looking at the zoning bylaw, there's 16 exceptions if you look through it. I don't know for sure, but I would state fairly confidently that there's very few RM6 zones without some kind of an exception required. It requires at the moment a 7.5-meter front yard, nine-metre side yards, and a 25% lot coverage, which is not really in keeping with the official plan policies of more compact form, bring buildings to the street. So it's a little bit outdated in terms of its regulations, and hence, that's why you're seeing a few, quite a few modifications to it. I welcome any questions the committee may have.
Thank you, committee members. Do we have any questions? Counselor Ferguson?
Yes, thank you, Nancy. Through you, Madam Chairman. The structure immediately to the west of this application, what is that? I think the committee might be interested in that.
That's a single detached dwelling.
Right. So it's a single-family home immediately to the west. And what's the side yard setback that you're proposing from that single-family home?
It is a 1.2 meter at the minimum, increasing to four.
So at one point, at the nearest point, it's 1.2-meter side yard setback from that single-family home.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of committee? I do have a couple then. I just want to ask, could you just clarify? I'll relinquish the chair to Counselor Ethan Johnson. Wendy, could I just ask a question? She says, I know at the last meeting, we were told there's no intent on taking any trees down. I think the developer plans on planting more trees. Could you just verify that? Because that was a concern that was brought today by the presenter, so.
Yes, I just heard that this morning from the delegation. Yes, it certainly is the intent of the owner to plant more trees, the shorter version, on the private property. There's no intention to take down any trees. There's the 10-meter hydro corridor, 5-meters Dally Drive. Within those 15 to 20, 15 meters, there's no intention to take down any trees, unless, of course, it's in the agreement and the regulations if something's impacting the hydro lines that has to be taken down. In terms of, I do believe the owner has told me he has walked the site with the city's natural heritage planner, and I can't state at this point the official or the trees would survive. I can't really speak to that at this point, but certainly within reason, there's certainly an intention to buffer as much as possible.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that, sorry. And can you just clarify, because I know you don't have the design of the building itself in front of us. Do you have that? And just where is the underground parking access?
It is right here.
And the seven parking spaces outside at grade are at the front, right there?
Yes, along here.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. I think that's it. One last, I just want to verify, and I think it was mentioned at last meeting, because I know I made a note of it. And I'm not sure, and I'm going to ask staff, why the Dally Drive property that has been purchased by the applicant, why that land is not taken into consideration to do the calculations? Because if it was, that would eliminate five or six of the variance. Is that correct?
Yes, it's, yes, Madam Chair. I believe the reason why is that it is a separate zone. Right now, it's zoned in the Ancaster zoning bylaw as public open space. There's no hazard conservation. There is no unique trees or anything of environmental significance on the land, but we have agreed to the new P5 in the new zoning bylaw, the 05200. So I think the intent is that they only calculate the density based on the area zoned for RM6 with the exception number, not the P5 area. But generally speaking, that would, you know, open-spacelands would be in either public ownership or really a hazard land. In this case, they're just general open-spacelands, as the previous delegation had referred to. They really are. So yeah, the net density should include them, in my opinion, but it does not. So we have a little, we have a few modifications that are a bit higher than you would normally see.
Thank you for that. And I'm sure there'll be questions to staff. I appreciate your comments and answers, Nancy. So I'll take the chair back. Thank you. And any other questions of the presenter? Seeing none, may I have a motion to receive the delegation? Moved by Counselor Ethan Johnson, second by Counselor Skelly. All in favor? Thank you. Counselor Ferguson, did you wish to speak to this matter?
Yes, I do, Madam Chairman. And I first want to thank the committee for deferring this until I could be here today. For personal reasons, I couldn't attend the public meeting. And so I did read what the delegate said at that public meeting, and I'm glad I was able to come out and do a presentation today. So thank you for approving the delegation. There's a little history on this site. A few years ago, not that long ago, the applicant community wanted to put a medical center up. And so I was supportive of that because I don't want the medical centers in the inner corner of Ancaster. Well, this is a very important part of our community. It's our main street, Wilson. It's not in the old police village, as called. And this is the right location for a medical facility to go. So I worked very diligently with them and with our staff to get a number of variances for that. One was no requirement for a road widening, which is typical on a natural road. We would take that, but was able to work with staff to waive that, to allow an additional four meters at the front. The second thing we did was arrange to sell part of the property, in fact, sold all the property to them at the rear, because they had to put a retaining wall up for the medical building in order to get enough space for... Worked very hard to get that thing done right. Worked with the community to get acceptance to it. They give it a nice heritage look, and I thought we were all very pleased with the end result. They subsequently abandoned that and went to this residential application, now took advantage of those variances that were provided for the medical building, which is unfortunate. But speaking of variances, this is where I take real issue, because, you know, we hear the planner saying, well, you have allowed these variances of the locations. If we allow these 10 variances, they're going to add this site now to their list for the next applications. And it just keeps rolling. And so they are asking for a density increase of 50% from 60 units per hectare to 91. They are asking for a maximum lot coverage of 25%, where in our secondary plan, in official plan, it's supposed to be 50%. The height, I'm not terribly concerned about, is three floors, and I do appreciate that they didn't try to squeeze that here. They sure did over Garner Road, and I'll come back to that in a minute. But here, they respected the three-floor height limit. And actually, the building is designed to nicely fit in with the heritage features, and that was discussed at our community council when David Premey did an addition to it. The front yard setback is supposed to be 7.5 meters. They're asking for three, in addition to the five meters we give them because they didn't have to offer the road widening. So in fact, they're reducing it from 12.5 to three meters. So they're shoving this thing right out against the road. To the single-family home at the west end is 1.2 meters, where our secondary plan requires nine meters. That's a pretty significant variance. This will attract families because of the price point, and there's some two bedrooms in it, but no children's play area. Eliminated that. Maximum landscapes percent, a significant reduction. The minimum planting strip is supposed to be three meters. They're asking for one meter. And there's supposed to be 45 parking spaces, and they're only applying 38, and a number of those are tandem, five are tandem, which I haven't seen in Ancaster before. Maybe they're used through the rest of the city. This is where you park one car right against the other one, and one has to be moved before the other one can back out. And so that's a slippery slope to start down. And so I'm very concerned about these 10 variances. It sets a dangerous precedent for other applications that are going to come forward. I know members of the committee will remember, and I think Counselor Collins moved the motion for denial on 121 Fiddler's Green Road, where they did the same thing on two lots, committed 21 condo facilities that they wanted to put in. It just didn't fit the character there. Staff recommended approval. Committee graciously denied it. It went to the OMB, and we won at the OMB, because 10 variances are too many. And the OMB upheld that decision. You know, there's also, you know, the community council, it went, as I do, little concerned about those big windows and whether it'd be a striptease done to those things, but they seem to point, they're at both ends of the building, pointing right out down the street. So I've talked to staff, they're going to get those reduced, but they just seem to stand apart from that. It is a good design, I'll handle that. So the community council was pleased with that. They didn't know, though, there's 10 variances, and it went to them because the staff report wasn't finished. I think they've been questioning that. The other major concern they had, you could see it very nicely on this drawing, Wilson Street's only one lane each way. And, you know, in these days of Amazon, I know when my grandson was born, Amazon showed up, or the courier showed up at my house every day, something for his grandson, because people are using Amazon. Where are courier trucks? Where's darts? Where are other delivery vehicles going to stop to offload? Now, it's suggested they pull into the parking lot. I've watched these courier guys, they don't do that. They just stop out front, run their parcel in, and they're going to block a lane, or block the bicycle lane, and block most of the one lane while they're running and do that. There should be a lay-by in front of here, according to the community council, to allow delivery vehicles and other drop-offs, particularly darts, because this market may appeal to seniors also. And so how do you get a vehicle in there, other than to put them down in the parking lot and then try to wheel them up to the front door? They won't do that. They'll park out front and cause disruption to traffic on Wilson Street, which has a traffic problem now. I agree that the traffic generated by this development won't impair significantly the amount of traffic on Wilson Street. And so that was the position of the community council. And, you know, the last thing I have, and I'll say this as gently as I can, I think my trust has been betrayed by the developer in this one. You know, I went to the law forum on the commercial building, the medical building, got him his variances required, then used it to be able to get this application in, particularly the front yard setback because of waiving the road allowances, and being able to purchase the property to shove the building back further. You know, we got full approval from the staff to, and what trees could be removed to allow this retaining wall, but they go in on a Sunday and take it down. So all the neighbors are thinking he's sneaking around. Why is he doing it on a Sunday? And didn't need to do that. He could have come in on a Monday or Tuesday, do the regular work week, and take these trees down, because then it'd be more visible to neighbors. My phone was rung off the hook that Sunday morning. I had to go down to the site, stop the operator. I make darn sure he wasn't going beyond where he was supposed to, and that was my fear. But it just set a bad tone when they go in and take a bunch of trees down on Sunday morning with the neighbors. And I guess the part that really makes me concerned about this particular developer is on Garner Road, you dealt with this at the last meeting also. They came in to see me about that property and showed the three-floor facility, which met the official plan, commercial in the first floor, residential in the second, third floor. But when they... And so how do I trust someone who does that? And then they won't even let it come before committee. They take it directly to the OMB. And so that's not playing fair, in my view. And also, staff tell me on this site, when they come in and put an application in, they put the wrong area in in order to have the density fit. Unfortunately, our staff caught that, tracked it, but the density is now 50% more than what it's supposed to be. So for all these reasons, and from what it was this morning, I have trouble with this application, and I can't support it. I'm going to ask it to you today.
Thank you, Counselor. And I have Counselor Green and Counselor Collins.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Given the presentation that was before us, had that been kind of, you know, the thrust of the arguments, I would have been likely to support this. I would have been, you know, looking at it and understanding our targets for density, I would have been very likely to support this. And subsequently, hearing the very measured and clearly well-thought-out and presented arguments by the counselor, I have serious concerns with this. For those reasons, I won't be supporting it. But I will say that if there's a development of this nature that you'd like to see happen in Ward 3, come on down, we'd be happy to have it. But, you know, this idea of the bait and switch, we've heard it here before, Madam Chair, and it certainly raises some serious concerns with the way the OMB functions to circumvent local decision-making. And I'm also not comfortable with how it kind of transforms the next kind of unbeknownst to the counselor and the community. So I can't support it for those reasons, and I appreciate the counselor taking time to come here and provide that context. Madam Chair, to the Ward Counselor, had he not been here today and I not heard that context, on its merits, I probably would have supported it with the variances. But having heard what you've just said now, I certainly cannot support it and will be opposing this.
Thank you, Counselor Collins.
Yeah. I will move the denial of the application at the appropriate time for the reasons enunciated by Counselor Ferguson.
Enunciate. Thank you. And I'm just going to relinquish Terry Counselor Johnson, if nobody else wishes to speak. I just want to ask staff a couple of questions, and I know Counselor Ferguson raised an issue of development proposal for Fiddler's Green. Can staff just enlighten me? Do we know, Counselor, if I can ask you, what was the staff position on the Fiddler's Green development you said?
They supported it.
They did, thank you. I just wanted to be sure, because I don't recall off the top of my head that one. Okay. And I just want to, just as a comment here, the community was aware of this particular development proposal being an amendment coming forward from the previous medical building, and I guess staff can respond because of the meeting chronology, correct?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. Notice of the application was circulated when the application was deemed complete to registered owners within 120 meters, and the sign was posted on the property.
Thank you. And with regards to servicing of the property by service vehicles, carriers, darts, et cetera, if anyone enlightened, I'm sure that's more traffic than here, but do we know how the schematic would be of that, if somebody's stopping on Wilson Street? Is there anyone here?
Through the chair to the counselor. Through the site plan process, we would look at vehicle circulation, so we'd want to make sure that all the radius of all the curbs and everything would allow for service vehicles.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. Okay, I'll take the chair back. And Counselor Skelly?
Thank you. This question is for staff through the chair. Why would you allow and recommend this proposal with so many variances? I don't understand. If we're asking for, for example, is it a nine-meter or a three-meter setback, and we're approving one, why would we agree to that?
Through you, Madam Chair. While there are a number of modifications to the zoning bylaw, I don't think that situation is in and of itself terribly uncommon. In this case, we were reviewing the development as a whole and looking as to how best we can secure what was presented in terms of the form and the massing and the scale. You know, the front yard setback was a reduction, but I think it is in keeping with our official plan policies to have an active street presence and bring buildings closer to the street.
Through the chair, perhaps I can add, some of the variances are also required because of the unique shape of the property, so with it being triangular. So the variances are written that it references or reflects the minimum that has widened to four meters. So it, some of the variances are required because of the odd shape of the parcel.
Thank you. Through the chair, is it common to allow this many variances and then recommend approval of a project?
Through the chair to the counselor. We, as Valeria indicated, we look at each project and each proposal on its own merits. In this case, staff evaluated the modifications that were requested and were supportive of it. A lot of the modifications do implement our official plan policies. So we do have official plan policies that speak to design, that speak to moving buildings closer to the street, that speak to reduction in parking. So as far as the rationale and justification, the variances would be in keeping with the intent of the official plan.
Through the chair, the reduction in parking is, especially in Ancaster, there are vehicles to drive around, but that is a concern. What is the, what is... Would we normally have asked for, and what are we approving?
Through you, Madam Chair. Bylaw would require two parking spaces per unit plus an additional 0.33 parking spaces per unit, which in this case would total 45 spaces. Here, the applicant is providing... Here, the applicant is providing 2.16 plus the 0.33 for visitor parking spaces. So, all visitor parking spaces are being required, the reduction is for the units. In addition, as the councillor mentioned, the two-bedroom units will have the tandem spaces, five of which are efficiency of seven spaces.
Thank you. Through the chair, is tandem anywhere, do we allow that anywhere else in the city, number one? And number two, is there street parking? I'm familiar with that area, and I don't think there's much, if any, street parking, and just trying to visit somebody unless they have a driveway for eight cars, it can be a real struggle.
Through the chair to the councillor, because we still use a number of different zoning bylaws across the city, there are situations where tandem parking is permitted. In this case, the tandem parking, it's our understanding that they would be, the two spaces that would be tandem would be linked to one unit, so coordination of the cars would be within that one unit, wouldn't be two separate units that would have tandem parking. And it's my understanding that there is no parking along Wilson Street.
Thank you. The councillor referred through the chair, the application being for a medical facility. Can you give me the history on that, and how it ended up that the modifications were permitted to the plan, and then residential building was then substituted? Can you just give me a little history?
Through the chair to the councillor, I will do my best, based on limited knowledge I have of that previous application, but there was an application, I want to say, I think it was 2014, I believe, with a rezoning application for a medical clinic. Ultimately, that proposal was approved, and then subsequently, in 2015, this application was, 2016, my apologies, this application was made by the owner.
And through the chair, what are the major differences between an application for a medical clinic? Wouldn't you require more parking for a medical clinic and less for residential? What were the major changes that were permitted under that particular application? Or am I misinterpreting that, that that was, that you don't necessarily have different criteria when you're seeking approval for a medical clinic versus residential?
Through the chair to the councillor, my apologies, I don't have that information in front of me, so I couldn't give you a breakdown of the differences. The zoning that they were requesting would have been a commercial zone, so there would have been different requirements. The zoning for a commercial use and the zoning for residential use would vary slightly. There, they, the parking, I, sorry, I'm just looking at the bylaw here quickly, the zoning bylaw, the site-specific amendment that was brought forward, had a few variances relating to maximum floor area, location of the front yard, the width of the side yard, and the width of the rear yard. So, somewhat similar to some of the variances that are in front of you today, but slightly different in that they are different zones that staff reviewed.
Through the chair, my review of the application was, the application as it was presented, I was aware of the old application just by reviewing the history, but I did not use those variances to justify these variances. It was completely...
Thank you, councillor Brenda Johnson.
Yep, thank you. And it's more of a comment than a question, to be honest with you. Secondary plans are not done on the fly, they're not done within a week. Anyone who was here at the last term of council, we sat through nine, 10-hour meetings just to do the secondary plan for the Fruitland Winona area. A lot of input is put into this, the public has a say in it, and at the end of the day, when residents move in, or those who already live there, when a secondary plan is enacted, it gives the residents a comfort level of what to expect. So, we do have some variances that come in once in a while, because it just makes common sense. And then we have other variances where it's... That doesn't even fall under that heading. So, for that reason, and councillor Ferguson's comments really weighed heavily on me, I'm a policy girl. If it was there, and I've gone to the Bimberk Village when a three-story came in, and there was a big uproar about the three-story building, and I stood in front of that three-story building saying that this is in your secondary plan, this is why your house was allowed to be built. So, I am going to defend that policy to allow that three-story to come in. So, that's where I'm coming from, is that when policies are put in place, it gives the residents a comfort level, they may understand what is to be expected. And if this is not expected, I can completely understand and sympathize with the neighborhood. So, for that reason, and the reason that councillor Ferguson stated earlier, I will also be supporting the denial.
Thank you, everyone. With that, then, I'm going to, there was, who's moved the motion? Councillor Collins, you're moving the motion to deny. Seconded by councillor Aidan Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
I wish to be, Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, with, you have to add, with the submissions, based on the submissions provided from the public, okay? Yep. Okay, and I will be recorded as opposed to that recommendation, thank you. So, that recommendation does carry. Thank you.
I'm ready now.
Move on to, sorry, councillor Farr. This is under item 8.2, Hamilton Municipal Heritage Committee Report. Members of the committee were now on item 8.2, Hamilton, okay, there are five recommendations, and we have delegations, councillor, did you come forward, please? All right, is there another delegation on this? I just see the one, no, this there. Thank you, good morning, Mrs.
Thank you for letting me appear. I'm Tim Bullock, lawyer at Simpson Weigel. I act for Houston Business Space, the owners of 18 to 28 King Street East. Last here in January, when planning committee and then council approved the demolition of 24 to 28 King East, and allowed the preservation of the facades for the other premises, 18 to 22. Didn't expect to be here again so soon. Heritage Committee has proposed the creation of a heritage conservation district. I don't intend to speak to the wisdom or purpose of that. I'm concerned specifically about the properties my clients own. I am concerned that in this process whereby you may request a study to be done, if that's coupled with demolition, development, et cetera, for a year, then we are back at square one, and what do we do for a year? If you then go further, do the study, and you create the heritage conservation district where we were designated, then not designated will be designated again, and do we start all over again with what we want to do? It was a three-year process, at least. We followed all of the legal requirements, went to meetings with planning staff, planning department, legal department, and then was in front of heritage committee on more than one occasion, this committee more than one occasion, and then council. We've done what we were to do. So, without speaking specifically to the good points, or lack thereof, for the heritage conservation district, we're just here to say, please don't make us start all over, please exclude us from the heritage conservation district. You, as council, approved what we wanted to do, we don't think we should be going back and redoing it all. And there's several spots where if you're not careful, you can step into a hole, and we will have to. One would be if you request a study and tie it to a bylaw, another would be if an interim control bylaw is requested, and the other would be if ultimately the heritage conservation district is approved. So, doing all the effort that's been put into this...